Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the public hearing regarding our budget. At this time, we would like to open the public hearing on the school committee budget. The time now is 5:35 PM. Before we start, I would like to explain how the hearing will be conducted this evening. We encourage public comments and invite you to come up and share your feedback. We want people to feel comfortable coming forward and voicing any concerns or questions they may have on the current budget you'll see this evening. There will be no comments from the school committee members tonight. Please direct all questions to the chair. The chair will direct your questions to the appropriate people this evening. If you have a series of questions, please tell us and we'll do our best to respond to all of them. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your street address. We will be having another public hearing next week, Wednesday night at 6:30 PM, March 21st. And as always, we always encourage your feedback, whether you're watching it from home or you're here this evening. We welcome your feedback and your input and we appreciate you letting us know any concerns or questions that you may have. So at this time, I'd actually like to turn it over to Mr. Malone, who probably is going to turn it over to our business manager, but I'd like to now turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Matthews has prepared a presentation for this evening, which will be followed by a FinCon hearing later on this evening. So hats off to her, Ms. Matthews, because through the disruption in schedule due to the weather, this at times has been difficult and this is the third reschedule, I believe, of this budget hearing. So with that, I'll hand it off to Ms. Matthews.
Okay, and with that, I'll start off by apologizing to the community for having to delay it so much. It's been a long time coming. Usually, we do this at the beginning of February and here we are in the middle of March. So as we have done in the past, this workshop, I mean, this presentation is a little different than the workshop. So what I do is I lump these accounts together according to the Massachusetts Department Early and Secondary Education Function numbers, because this is how we have to report it to the state at the end of the year. So the document itself is going to be broken down between regular education accounts and then special education accounts. This is how we have to submit it with DESI. So for the community, I will just explain that everything in the 1,000 series are administrative costs, everything in the 2,000 series are instructional costs. 3,000 series is other student services. 4,000 is operations and maintenance costs. 5,000 is fixed costs. 7,000 is equipment and replacement. And everything in the 9,000 series are tuitions. So I just want to remind everybody in the community that this is a negotiating year and all of the collective bargaining set aside funds are separate and that they're going to be at the end of the document. Within all the salary accounts, the only increases you're going to see are due to steps and lanes and not the percentage increases. So on this first page, it's all 1,000 series. So the whole entire thing is the administrative costs. There is a 3.39% increase in the administrative costs. Some of the reason for this increases, we had to get a different copier in the superintendent's office. There is an increase in the information systems training as well as the conferences. With all the added technology we had over this past fiscal year, we need to make sure that the information technology staff is properly trained to pass along their knowledge to the educators who are using the technology. The biggest increase you're going to see on this page is for the network and equipment maintenance. Our SOFOS antivirus three-year maintenance agreement is up in June, so we're going to need to renew it. So we only budget for it every three years. On the next page, page four, it is the beginning of the 2,000 series. Overall, the instructional lines have a 0.59% increase. You won't see that until the top of the following page, but it's going to be reflected there. Some of the things to note is, again, the salaries. There's only steps and lanes. Our principal conference line has an increase as more professional development opportunities have become available. There is a decrease in the media specialist line. This is simply a movement of funds where the line items reside. One of the integration technology specialists was listed under a specific school when it's a district-wide position, so we just had to put it into a district-wide account. So you'll see an increase there that I'll talk about after. The textbook decrease is merely bringing the accounts back to where they were last year. In the FY '18 budget, there was an increase at one of the lower elementary schools to account for new instructional materials. And finally, the decrease in the other instructional services is due to a decrease in the field trip transportation. Since we obtained the two multipurpose vans for the districts, we have been able to save on some of the transportation lines we have. Go to page five. This is where you can see the 0.59% at the top of the page, just so you can see it. Then we get into the 3,000 series, which is other student services, and there's an increase of 3.74%. The $250 increase, which shows as 125%, but it's only $250, that's transportation dues. It's both Mr. David Libby and I are members of Mass Association of Pupil Transportation. The membership went up by $25 and it was only budgeted for one of us. The 3% increase of the resource officers is much smaller than in previous years. We now have obtained 100% of both resource officers and the 3% is just based on the numbers that were given by the town for the total of the two officers, one at the high school and one at the wind middle school. In the 4,000 series, the operations and maintenance, there's a 2.34% increase. The increase in heating is due to the age of some of the buildings. We've had many issues this year with older boilers and leaks and the numbers reflect additional contracted services needed to maintain some of the buildings. And the increase in grounds and decrease of buildings is just a redistribution of building maintenance contracted services and grounds maintenance contracted services. They were just, some of the vendors went onto the wrong account. We go to the page six. The 5,000 series for the fixed charges, there is a decrease of 39.68%. This is somewhat reversal of the 61.54% increase we had last year due to the retirements and our contractual obligations. For FY '18, I believe we had 12 retirees that are going to take place this year. For next year, right now, we have a projected three. I mean, that number can fluctuate at any time, but this is where the decrease is coming from. So our overall regular education budget is an increase of 1.16% or $356,915. We go to page seven. We have our special education budget. In the 2,000 series, there is an increase of 1.24%. The first thing you could see here is the increase in dues at 77.78%. As some of you may be aware, we did not receive our special education program improvement grant this year. DESI changed the parameters of the grant and we lost approximately $29,000 in funding. That grant usually covered those membership dues, so we just had to make sure we budgeted for it for next year. There is a decrease in system-wide therapists and an increase in behavior therapists. They wash each other out. The funding was moved to support a BCBA for the lower elementary school and save funding previously paid to an outside vendor. So it wasn't an increase of funding we're looking for, just a redistribution. In the 3,000 series, there's a decrease of 2.89%. We have found a savings in our out-of-district transportation by teaming up with Chelmsford and Billerica and sharing the cost of the vehicles transporting our out-of-district students. It is a, we are going out to bid this year. Our contract is up on June 30th, so we are working with them, putting together the paperwork to go out to bid for out-of-district transportation. Our out-of-district tuitions have an overall 4.91% increase. These fluctuations between the account lines are based on the actual placements at the time of budget entry. This is a moving target. It's really hard to put it to words exactly why. Some go up and down, it's just where the students happen to be under the lines. So the overall special education is an increase of 1.77% or $180,662. On the next slide, page nine. This shows you the total FY '19 local appropriation for the Chupsbury Public Schools. This is where you can see that collective bargaining line. As you can see, that line item is $899,312. There's an overall increase of 3.31% or $1,503,514. This includes level funding of our capital outlay of $314,500. On page 10, this budget summary lines up with the town administrators, the town managers, excuse me, recommended school budget of $57,344,864. This includes the portion of fixed costs that are usually handled by the town. Our salaries are $33,388,551. Our operating costs are $13,264,271. And again, capital outlay is level funded at $314,500. This brings our total local appropriation to $46,967,322. What you will or might notice is that there is an additional increase of $53,093 since we had the budget workshop. Since that time, the town manager has come to us and told us that the assessment for Shaw Tech was not as anticipated, so we had an extra $53,093 that we could add into our budget.
So do you know how much that assessment went down? So does that mean it went down from the original?
That would be the, is down 53,000 from the original number that we were giving.
So on page 11, this next slide gives you an idea of all the non-funded positions needed within the school district. We've broken them down by school and by priority. The first line will be funded in FY '19, as I talked about before. By decreasing the system-wide therapist, we were able to increase the behavior therapist and support the BCBA for the doing elementary school. The rest of the positions on this list are unfunded positions by priority. If funding ever becomes available, the priorities might change based on the student needs of that time.
And Madam Chair, I just would want to add to that, that these are based at a period in time. The needs of the students continually change and we have to be reactive to that and we are constantly look at this and try to update it. But if additional funding, we came upon that, we would, again, relook at this list, look at the priority of what it is. And some of these can jockey around at different times, just depending on the needs of the students.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Makes sense?
Okay, and the next three slides, 12, 13, and 14. Keeping in mind with the non-funded personnel needs, the next three slides give you a look at the four-year capital plan we have by school. As you can see, the FY '18 column, we're very blessed to be able to be working on and/or have completed projects with a number in that column. Overall, in FY '18, we received an additional $1,741,825 in funding through town meeting or special town meeting. We're forever grateful to the community for supporting our school district needs. This document, just like the personnel needs, is a work in progress and we continue to update it based on the district needs. So we kind of continually go through and see what we need and update it accordingly. That is my, I don't know if you want me to go through any of the individual schools, but that's my presentation if anyone has any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. At this time, I'd like to just open up to my colleagues and see if they have. I know we had the workshop, so we've been looking at this data now for a while. Let's see if anyone has any questions this evening based upon what you presented. So I'd like to open that up now. If anyone would like to make any comments, or Mr. Sullivan?
I have a few questions. Is there money specifically budgeted in the special education for the special education pack, the running of that pack?
Um, no.
That's a line item that's created out of the special education department. So it would be a line item within the district's budget.
Okay, so there is money allocated for that?
There is money that's allocated through the special education department.
Okay, thank you. Page nine, I had a question. I did the math there. Regular day programs, I know you didn't have the collective bargaining. I assume that $890,000 number is added to the regular day programming to get a 4.59% increase? Is that right?
It is not all regular day because there's special education salaries as well as regular education salaries in that collective bargaining line. It's all salaries. That whole collective bargaining line is all salaries, but...
Where does that number come? Because that increase obviously isn't 4.5% from $30,691 to $31,048. I do that math.
So you want to, you want to know that 890, you want me to break it out between regular education and special education?
No, I'm just curious.
What we had to...
That increase is not 4.59%, correct?
The $31,048?
I just don't know how we got to that number, that percentage.
Okay, if you have another question to ask, I'm just going to do the calculations right here.
And I think the only other thing was the retirement, the 5,000 series?
Yes.
Is that just sick time buyback? I see it says something about incentive.
There's a retirement incentive that's in the, it's part of a contractual obligation. There is a sick buyback for some of the collective bargaining units, but there's also an additional retirement incentive that's written into some of the contacts.
Okay. And that's all, there's nothing else included in that?
No.
Right. That's all I have, Carrie. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. I'm sure she'll get back to us when she runs her numbers. Does anyone else have some questions they'd like to ask? Mrs. Bennett?
First, I just want to thank Ms. Matthews for taking the time. I think it was now a month ago, she did sit down with me and went through line by line the entire budget and answered all my questions. I have to say, she was so well-prepared. She definitely has backup documents for every single question I had and line items in this budget here. I just also had a couple of questions I'd like to add for, like whether it's personnel needs, et cetera. I saw there wasn't anything for the doing, also specifically for them. I know there's a bunch district-wide. Also, if we were considering having like a grant rider, whether it's a low tier, that's fine. I know we have Ms. Bestaria working with us, but she's also on an interim assignment right now. But is that something we also want to add in here? I know she ends up finding grants that helps pay for her resource, but is it something we just want to add in here, whether it's a real low tier? And the other line item we had talked about, and maybe this is kind of tied up with the committee that's looking at fees, was to kind of put a line item in here for the cost if we were to fund every single school fee, activity fee, and athletic fee.
I can add those in there.
Line item and parking. So I don't know if you were still waiting for the committee to come back on their...
We're actually, we're done meeting, because I'm on that committee, and we're actually in the process of putting together a presentation, which we're hoping to bring to you in April.
Okay, so maybe that's something we add later on. I know we weren't necessarily thinking that was a tier-one item anyway, but that maybe that's one of the things we keep amending to this tiers that you've got here. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Mr. Cutler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Do we still have those 700-plus in the special ed stabilization?
725, yes. It is still there and we have yet to use it.
All right, good. Thank you.
And I do not believe we will use it again this year.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. Thank you again, Mrs. Matthews, for the presentation. And hopefully, next year, there won't be as many snow days in between. I got a question, I know you alluded to it a little bit, is the number when I look at this, and I know it can fluctuate within the special education budget, is in the 9,300 series, the private day tuition, that number really seems to have almost doubled from last year. Can you just explain that a little bit?
Any private day tuition, we have a collaborative, we have our local collaborative that we are a member of. And then there's a Massachusetts tuitions, which are outside collaboratives that we're not members of. And then we have the private day tuitions, which are the day programs. Some of our students had transferred from collaboratives into day programs, so that number went up. Plus, we are using less circuit breaker money next year than this year because the circuit breaker has been, it's anticipated to be cut, like a percentage lower than what we were anticipating. So that's why the tuitions are higher.
Okay. And another point, too, I want to agree with Mrs. Bennett in terms of, if you look at the grant process, generally speaking, I know we got one grant cut, and I think as we move forward, grants are even going to be tougher to get, especially on the federal level. So I think I'd like to see that in one of the tiers also, in terms of a grant rider also.
I'll sit with the superintendent and we'll figure out where they go on the tier and we can add them in.
Because I think long-term, our purse will probably pay for itself in terms of, because I'm concerned, and there was an article in the Boston Globe, I believe it was two weeks ago, that alluded to that in terms of grants are just going to get tougher and tougher. And I think if we have somebody, you know, on board full-time or at least three-quarter time in terms of trying to figure out exactly what grants to go for and how we can go at them, I think might be long-term, be very beneficial to the district. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Do you have Mr. Sullivan's answer?
Well, I do, and he is correct. What I did, and that was my bad. I did add that whole collective bargaining into regular education. I did not break it out properly. So what I'll do is I just have to go back, figure out all the numbers, figure out what the percentage differences are between the two, and I'll update it and send it out.
Okay, thank you. It was just confusing.
No, I know, and that's, I apologize. That was my fault.
Then thank you for your hard work, too, Carrie. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, just a couple of comments just on what Mr. Francis brought up. One is, some of the changes we're seeing in the grants are former entitlement grants that we're no longer entitled to. The 274 grant out of special education was one of those. We've seen significant change in the Title I grant. Most districts would fund grant writing out of the Title I grant. We've had a significant decrease, as most communities of our size have, but also urban districts have. I think there's a move afoot within the state to try to look at a funding mechanism through Chapter 70 reform as opposed to grants. However, they haven't figured out the Chapter 70 reform part yet, but they have figured out that it's not going to be grants. So we're in this lull piece of, you know, moving from the free and reduced lunch formula to the economically disadvantaged formula, which significantly changes our eligibility for many grants. But it is something, that doesn't mean there aren't grants out there. There are a lot more federal grants that we might have to look at, but again, a lot of them have a criteria that we probably won't meet due to our demographics and how the town operates and the size of it. But we have seen the state back off the grants a bit. We've got to be more aggressive on finding those grants wherever they may be. And as far as the private day tuitions, the private schools have the ability to raise their rates without, with minimal regulatory opposition. So in typical private schools, you would see a double raise in their tuition rate during the day. One would be one through the apply through the state, which means they have to have a public hearing that you're invited to attend if you want to, to dispute whether that tuition rate can go up. And then the second one is a cost of living increase that comes usually right after that. Typically, these are great schools, do great things for our kids, but the tuitions that go along with them can climb and we need to be prepared as a district to answer to that as they come up.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I guess I would just like to add with, a lot of our questions have already been answered. Mrs. Matthews, you made yourself readily available to all of the committee members, which we truly appreciate through the process. So I just wanted to say a few things. I wanted to say that, I wanted to commend the district on putting together a financially sound budget. It's not easy in these times. We know there's many things that we'd love to see in this district and, you know, financial constraints. But I have to say, the direction that this district is going in and finding how to do more or less, because obviously, if we had more money, we'd be doing a lot of more fantastic things. I really appreciate the hard efforts of our administration team, our business office. It goes without saying, our town manager, our finance committee, our Board of Selectmen, they have been so supportive of education in this town and we truly appreciate it. We think of all these years and where we are today, it's really because of that collaboration. And there hasn't been any time when we go to them and we have a real good reason for doing something that they're not finding the money for us, you know, and we're switching things around. So I think this is a really great budget, you know, moving forward. I know that, I like how we're redeploying our efforts in staffing to really evolve with the changes in education. And I can't say enough how appreciative I am, because it is hard, right? We know all these wonderful things we could do if we had more money, although we are in a great place. I look at other districts and we read articles all the time about other towns. This town is very conservative. I mean, thanks to our town manager, Richard Montori, thanks for our superintendent, Mr. Malone, we're really doing all the right things to get the most out of the money that we do have available to us in Chupsbury. So if you're around town, you see our town manager, you see our superintendent, our administration, people in the community should thank them, because I really think they're doing a great job with the money that becomes available. So I just wanted to make sure I said that. Again, I appreciate the efforts. There's a lot of work put in this. Anyone in the community at any given time, Mrs. Matthews is great. She goes line by line with any of us, as Mrs. Bennett alluded to. If there's anyone out in the community that has any question on any line item, you can always find your way. Call Mrs. Matthews, call a superintendent, email. They always have an answer for everything. Sometimes it looks complicated and overwhelming, but it really isn't once you talk to these great people that do the great work line by line. So I just want to say thank you so much. It is a lot of work. It's something that didn't happen overnight. This process has gone on for a while, meeting with all administrators, continuing meeting with a superintendent, and it really is a great budget moving in times in the right direction. So thank you, Mrs. Matthews, for all your hard work. You're welcome. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak on the budget or anyone that would like to make any comments for the public hearing? If not seeing anyone, would someone like to make a motion to close out the public hearing this evening?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
A second. So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aight.
Okay, and Chair Botsai as well. At this time, we're going to be closing out the public hearing, but we're rejoining our regularly scheduled school committee meeting this evening at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Is it 6 o'clock? Okay, so we've got to go right into our regular meeting. Can I just give us one minute to change gears and we're going to go for it? Mr. Malone, you want to, when we get to a presentation, you'll talk about, we push them up to next week.
Yes, yes.
It's still on the agenda.
Right there. Okay.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the March 14, 2008 school committee meeting. The time now is 6:06. The March 14, 2018 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded under the open meeting law. The public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. We do have Ms. Rosalyn in pink here from Cryer. Welcome this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, just like to recap for everyone, just quickly, we just finished our first public hearing on this year's school budget. We have another one scheduled for next week, Wednesday night, the 21st, at 6:30 PM. Again, feel free to watch the public hearing that's been televised, provide any feedback for us, reach out to our superintendent, any of the school committee members, and we look forward to people tuning in again next week for our second public hearing on our school committee budget. We also will be going to session this evening at 8:00 PM at the Town Hall with the Finance Committee to present our budget to them as well. So I'd...
little bit less student-driven response, but they'll be doing theirs within the interim. They're likely going to continue with that tomorrow during school, but it's a little bit of a smaller event. But the significance, this is really student-driven, student-sponsored. We, as an administration, have kind of, we certainly want to support students on things of this nature that they want to do. However, we're not taking a specific stance on it one way or another. But the way in which, particularly here at the high school, the students have approached it and designed it and kept in line with what the feelings of the national event are, are pretty impressive. So really, the way the students have approached it have given us no reason to do anything but support them in what they want to do.
Yeah. And I'd just like to say, too, like, thank you to Ms. Vogel, Mr. Ware, Mr. Malone, just thank you for the support, and we're really lucky that we have administration on our side like that.
Please let the students thank you. We love to hear voices. We love when people step up and they're heard, and we think it's wonderful. I love the idea that it is student-led, because I think that's a wonderful thing, to empower the students to do what feels right for them. So please tell them, I'm sure that, I heard there was a lot of students that came forward, and that's great to see. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'm very happy to say that as well. And if you saw today on the news, there were across the country, tens of thousands of students.
Yeah.
So that was exciting, and that was great. So good to hear that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a nice night. All right, moving right along, I'm going to go over to Mr. Malone now for presentations and how we're going to handle the presentations this evening.
And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Reagan.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, School Committee, as you know, we've had these items on our plan to present three times now, and unfortunately, our efforts have been thwarted by the bad weather. I'd like to, with your indulgence, go out of order a little bit, because two of the items are particularly a little bit more time-sensitive to hopefully receive a vote on tonight. I'd like to start with the High School Program of Studies. As you know, every year, our high school administration and program supporters, our department heads, teachers, make it a priority to improve student programming, both academically, improve the recognitions, awards, and support systems that are put into play for students and helping them prepare for their life after high school. So let's first talk about life in high school through our Program of Study. You'll see that Principal Vogel supplied you with an update sheet. And I won't go through all of the bullets, because many of them are changes that were a result of coding issues or full implementation of the waterfall schedule, or some changes. For example, about six bullets down, the course change procedures that came out of some meetings in response to parent and student needs. So you can see that in the program, the course change procedures have been changed, both for full-year and semester courses, or I should say, updated. Down for bullets, various changes are made in the mathematics department in order to help prepare for accelerated math course programming for all students. Several upgrades throughout all of the departments have been made in courses. Further down, where it says calculus, will be offered as a dual enrollment course. What we didn't get into this bulleted list, which is really exciting, is we are also partnering, beginning our partnership, I should say, with Southern New Hampshire University for additional dual enrollment courses, especially in the technical and professional fields, and I'll talk a little bit more on that in a little bit. There are some new electives in the different departments. And then, in response to many students' requests, how can we start to put more AP courses, or offer the AP courses to a wider variety of students? And you'll see that AP Statistics next year will be a course offered to our sophomores. Let me go right up to the top of the list again, fourth bullet down, because this is something a little bit new, and it would have been impacted by one of the presentations. There's the new description of our senior project, our Global Competency Certification and the Innovation Course Pathway. These are designed connections, per se, to students focused and identified college majors and/or industry sectors. So it's exciting to tell you, right now, we have approximately 100 students already signed up for that senior project. So even though the Program of Studies needs to be formally voted on, some of these new enhancements are already underway and being talked about here in the school. So I know that you've had some...
Ms. Reagan, I just had one question.
Sure.
We had sent many edits to Mrs. Vogel, and in the packet that we got, and I don't know if Mrs. Johnson gave us, you know, it's been, we keep getting new ones. The edits are not reflective of that. Would just, have edits been made, or I'm just curious? It could be that just not in the copy that we got.
It could be.
But there were several, I know a couple of school committee members had sent some edits, and they're just not reflective in what we have in front of us, which is, you know, not to say what we say is going to change anyways, but there were some good...
Well, that would be my question, because if in theory, or if in content, we feel that we can vote on the Program of Studies tonight, given that edits and typos are addressed, I think that would be helpful. If you feel, because I know there were several questions that came up in advance, too, that I think were responded to.
Yes.
But if it's typos and edits, yet the content feels right...
So you're asking us to vote on these presentations this evening? I thought we weren't voting, but we are.
I'm recommending that we vote on two of them tonight, and one, and specifically first, would be the Program of Study, so that we can finalize. We hate to confuse students as they start to choose their courses for next year.
Makes sense.
We'd like it to be final, and the codes to be actually in Aspen, as we do so.
And what was the other one you were going to have, I was just sort of curious, it would be the college?
It would be the college planning guide.
And we wait for the global competency next week?
Well, let me just talk for a minute about, would you like to take them separately, or would you like me to talk?
Yes.
Okay.
Separately, yeah.
So if we could, I would recommend that the School Committee vote to approve the Tewksbury Memorial High School's 2018-2019 Programs of Studies as presented, and then parenthetically that we correct typos and edits.
So let's just, and I probably gave them misinformation. I think we're very comfortable, because we're looking at this data for two, three weeks now.
Yes.
So I think we're comfortable, and we're fine. But does anyone have any questions on the Program of Studies? Is everyone's comfortable with the feedback they've given, and everybody's... Okay. So I think we're prepared to move forward. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to adopt the Tewksbury Memorial High School Program of Studies for 2018-19, subject to any edits or typos that we have to make.
A second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor this evening to approve the Tewksbury Memorial High School 2018-2019 Program of Studies. This does require roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. So that's unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I just...
Yes, Mrs. Bennett?
Just if you could communicate to Mrs. Vogel and her staff, you did, again, amazing job on the Program of Studies, and yourself as well, I'm sure you were involved. I love how they're incorporating new initiatives, adding dual enrollment additional classes. I know they're embracing that and coming up with great new ideas, and kind of being flexible on what the students want to see as we go forward.
Thank you, I will.
Pass along that message.
And we'll get a finished copy, too, and we appreciate. I know that it takes many eyes to look over a document like this, and edits and typos are missed all the time. Every time someone who looks at it, so thank you whenever.
So everybody, I just want to make sure, too, that there's no reason to bring them forward next school committee meeting everyone's comfortable with. Yep, so you can let Mrs. Vogel know there's no reason for her to come next week. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, you can also ask Mrs. Vogel, I know it's time-sensitive, because the children are picking courses. She could even put it online and just tell us it's online. We could take a look at it, instead of making another hard copy.
Perfect.
Saves some paper.
And there's no reason to come again. Yep.
Okay, thank you. The next item I'm hoping we can vote on tonight would be the Tewksbury Memorial High School's College Planning Guide for the 2018-2019 school year. As you have seen time and time again, Ms. Baker O'Brien, our guidance department chair, really works tirelessly to work with both students and families as they plan for their life after high school. So this guide, she updates every year, the dates for early acceptance, the dates for SATs, the checklist for juniors and seniors are just invaluable. They're really helpful in the many ways in which she and her department work with freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors to prepare across all of their years here, to whether it be apply for college admissions or be prepared for the career world after high school.
Would someone like to make a motion on the College Planning Guide?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to accept the College Planning Guide as presented to us tonight.
A second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve the Tewksbury Memorial High School 2018-2019 College Planning Guide. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Another unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I just...
Yes, Mrs. Bennett?
Just if you could communicate to Mrs. Vogel and her staff, you did, again, amazing job on the Program of Studies, and yourself as well, I'm sure you were involved. I love how they're incorporating new initiatives, adding dual enrollment additional classes. I know they're embracing that and coming up with great new ideas, and kind of being flexible on what the students want to see as we go forward.
Thank you, I will.
Pass along that message.
And we'll get a finished copy, too, and we appreciate. I know that it takes many eyes to look over a document like this, and edits and typos are missed all the time. Every time someone who looks at it, so thank you whenever.
So everybody, I just want to make sure, too, that there's no reason to bring them forward next school committee meeting everyone's comfortable with. Yep, so you can let Mrs. Vogel know there's no reason for her to come next week. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, you can also ask Mrs. Vogel, I know it's time-sensitive, because the children are picking courses. She could even put it online and just tell us it's online. We could take a look at it, instead of making another hard copy.
Perfect.
Saves some paper.
And there's no reason to come again. Yep.
Okay, thank you. The next item I'm hoping we can vote on tonight would be the Tewksbury Memorial High School's College Planning Guide for the 2018-2019 school year. As you have seen time and time again, Ms. Baker O'Brien, our guidance department chair, really works tirelessly to work with both students and families as they plan for their life after high school. So this guide, she updates every year, the dates for early acceptance, the dates for SATs, the checklist for juniors and seniors are just invaluable. They're really helpful in the many ways in which she and her department work with freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors to prepare across all of their years here, to whether it be apply for college admissions or be prepared for the career world after high school.
Would someone like to make a motion on the College Planning Guide?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to accept the College Planning Guide as presented to us tonight.
A second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve the Tewksbury Memorial High School 2018-2019 College Planning Guide. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Another unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I just...
Yes, Mrs. Bennett?
Just if you could communicate to Mrs. Vogel and her staff, you did, again, amazing job on the Program of Studies, and yourself as well, I'm sure you were involved. I love how they're incorporating new initiatives, adding dual enrollment additional classes. I know they're embracing that and coming up with great new ideas, and kind of being flexible on what the students want to see as we go forward.
Thank you, I will.
Pass along that message.
And we'll get a finished copy, too, and we appreciate. I know that it takes many eyes to look over a document like this, and edits and typos are missed all the time. Every time someone who looks at it, so thank you whenever.
So everybody, I just want to make sure, too, that there's no reason to bring them forward next school committee meeting everyone's comfortable with. Yep, so you can let Mrs. Vogel know there's no reason for her to come next week. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, you can also ask Mrs. Vogel, I know it's time-sensitive, because the children are picking courses. She could even put it online and just tell us it's online. We could take a look at it, instead of making another hard copy.
Perfect.
Saves some paper.
And there's no reason to come again. Yep.
Okay, thank you. The next item I'm hoping we can vote on tonight would be the Tewksbury Memorial High School's College Planning Guide for the 2018-2019 school year. As you have seen time and time again, Ms. Baker O'Brien, our guidance department chair, really works tirelessly to work with both students and families as they plan for their life after high school. So this guide, she updates every year, the dates for early acceptance, the dates for SATs, the checklist for juniors and seniors are just invaluable. They're really helpful in the many ways in which she and her department work with freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors to prepare across all of their years here, to whether it be apply for college admissions or be prepared for the career world after high school.
Would someone like to make a motion on the College Planning Guide?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to accept the College Planning Guide as presented to us tonight.
A second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve the Tewksbury Memorial High School 2018-2019 College Planning Guide. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Another unanimous vote. Again, wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful document.
Behind that document was informational only, but I just do want to draw parents' attention if they're looking at the Tewksbury Memorial High School Guidance Department, their post-secondary transition planning for all students. This is informational, it does not require a vote. But again, you can see the many, many activities that our guidance department undertakes on behalf of our students around career awareness and career exploration at every grade level. I'm not going to read the document, but I think it's important to draw your attention to both the middle of the document, the Innovation Pathways Program. If you remember, a couple of meetings ago, I told you that we were awarded a grant of approximately $10,000 as the seed money towards an Innovation Pathway Program Grant, a much larger grant. This document is really married to that Pathway Program. At this time, where we are in the grant, we're attending an interview with Desi on March 20th, where they will talk about our place in that process. We're now one of seven districts, and they will be choosing five to receive that large sum of money. That grant is really, the focus is on expanding our student internship opportunities, especially for our junior students, in the professional and technical career pathways as they prepare to choose courses and get ready for that college and career acceptance piece. So it's exciting. Karen wanted you to see this, Ms. Baker O'Brien wanted you to see this, because it's part of the work moving forward in that grant. Once that grant decision is made, she'll be in front of you with a more lengthy presentation on the program. This is informational only. Now, the presentation that I feel really deserves the time in front of you is the Global Competency Certification Program. Ms. Grassa Dudley has worked very hard with a full department of teachers, or a full committee of teachers, to bring this type of recognition and certification to graduating students. There are two pieces, really, that she would have presented tonight, two very separate[1624.71] There are two pieces really that she would have presented tonight, two very separate programs, but two different recognition opportunities for our students. One would be global competency, and the second would be the seal of biliteracy. They're very separate. I can give you just a really brief summary because she really should present, but I think it might help you when you're thinking through some questions when we can bring her here next week on the 21st. So global competency is really geared to those students who, for lack of a better way of putting it, have that absolute focus and desire to help save the world through global studies. And there's criteria. This is a certification that could happen at graduation. The seal of biliteracy is really a federal initiative that was charged to the states to pilot. Mass put the seal of biliteracy into law in November of 2017, and we opted in to pilot Tuxbury, again, now through Ms. Grassa Dudley's efforts with Ms. Hodgson this time, wants to pilot the seal of biliteracy. So what does it mean? We know that in the workforce, a highly sought-after 21st century skill is to be biliterate, to be literate in more than one language. The seal of biliteracy recognizes that. However, not everybody with biliteracy wants to be globally competent and save the world. So these are very different things. One is global competency, which you don't need to be literate in more than one language, and biliteracy is a recognition of folks that are. So when, I, my hope is that inviting Ms. Dudley here on the 21st, she can highlight both of these recognition programs for our students and that you can, she is seeking a vote on the global competency program. And if you have questions you'd like to get in advance to her after seeing these documents for the past few weeks, then we'll certainly forward, if you could send them to me and I'll forward them to her. So that concludes the presentation.
Hey, great. So just for the record, the global competency will be the only presentation moving forward on the 21st?
Yes.
Perfect. And we'll bring that to a vote as well. All right, wonderful. Moving right along to citizens forum, is there anyone this evening wishing to speak that's here this evening? Come right up to, yep, just your name and address.
Deana Mancini, 15 10th Lane. I have a question about the ACE program, and I noticed it in your packet, so I don't know if you can answer this, but it says that the DLC at the Dewing piloted the ACE program for about three months, but we're already looking at adopting the, the program. So I'm just curious what, how after three months? It's an expensive program, so how after three months, we're already, we're really confident that that's going to show us the improvement that you're looking for?
Okay.
Madam Chair, great question. Thank you, Ms. Mancini. I think one of the things going, we've, due to all the weather rescheduling, one of the things was a evening to look at the DLC, DLC, excuse me, the ACE program, a little bit more in-depth and share some of that information and, and look at that. If your question is, is a three-month pilot long enough to make a determination for budgeting for that? It is a relatively expensive program. Besides the pilot, we have also looked at best practices in other districts and other districts that have adopted it. I think it's a little, the explanation's probably a little bit more intricate than my expertise at this moment, so what we can certainly do is circle back, we, I'm not sure that date has been rescheduled on the ACE. So that would be a big one where we'd want to talk, that would be a perfect question that we can start off with likely, is to look at that and examine the specific data of that from the pilot, maybe show some of the examples of other districts that are using it and have had success, and what the value is. We did have present, I know, we, we had a presentation here at school committee on it, which was very specific to what our students have experienced and what the value is in those pieces, so I'm hoping that would be overlapped in the community meeting on that, that would help on that.
I can also add to that, today, tonight is not a vote to adopt or purchase, it's a recommendation to move forward with the process, and the process would now include a two-week window of time for the community and/or associated parents and class students, families, to look at the program. Where, I haven't, it's a new business, but I'm going to recommend that we postpone the decision until April 11th because we need that two-week window as part of our policy, because we need to reschedule that meeting. I will tell you, there's a rubric involved where they have evaluated it, and especially have looked at it up against Teach Town, which was a program we're currently using, so this is to update the, the curriculum we have for students who need even further than our intensive interventions to find out why they're not able to access them.
Do you think the parent night will be rescheduled before the April 11th?
It ha, it will be. We will not make a recommendation to purchase or implement without having that opportunity.
Okay, thanks.
And I, I would add too, if there's other specifics beyond the cost, I know you mentioned the expense, but if there's specific pieces that if you wanted to email myself or Mr. Pelletti, had questions on that, might be a great way to target some of the things that are discussed that night.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mancini. Okay, not seeing anyone else wishing to speak this evening, I'm going to go over to our clerk, Mr. Sullivan, to present our meeting minutes.
Thank you. Like to make a motion to approve the January 24th, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the January 22nd, 2018 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's your unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sullivan will now present our payroll.
I'd also like to move the school department payroll for the period ending January 25th, 2018, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,297,585.80.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the payroll period ending January 25th, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I'd also like to move the school department payroll for the period ending February 8th, 2018, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,314,546.21.
I'll second.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the payroll period ending February 8th, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And finally, I'd like to move the school department payroll for the period ending February 22nd, 2018, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,331,325.74.
I'll second.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the payroll period ending February 22nd, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
I'd like to now turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, to provide the superintendent and staff reports this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple, two priority items I'd like to discuss this evening. One is, to start off would be about the weather, and the second one would be about security. First of all, obviously, with the current weather patterns we've been going through, we've had to cancel school. Huge thank you to our maintenance department who has done a great job clearing out the schools, working enormous amount of hours to try to make sure our students can get here to school tomorrow safely as they have for every storm prior to this, and a thank you to the town for clearing the roads and, and helping us with that. Certainly, over two feet of snow is not something that's, that's always manageable, but we're very confident that we'll be able to open on time tomorrow, pending any further weather. There's been, right now, we have eight days missed due to weather. Our original programmed end date with five days would have gotten us out, I believe, on June 21st. When we add the additional three days, that brings us to June 26th. Certainly, that's later than we all desire. We're certainly open to looking at what options may be out there. I'll meet with the president of the teachers' union tomorrow, and we'll, we're open to any suggestion, any option. There's been some discussion around what people are referring to as blizzard bags or weather bags, alternative means of which to demonstrate student learning without actually holding school. We're certainly open to look at those, but we certainly want to make sure whatever decisions we make are in the best interest of the students, their quality based on quality instruction that our students, we know they get when they're in front of our teachers. So we would want to make sure that any of those elements are viable, but right now, our last day of school is Tuesday, the 26th. Apologies to parents, community members, for the amount of rescheduling we've had to do about meetings and all other kind of elements like that, but again, we're trying to make sure we get in the meetings that we had scheduled. This, in fact, is the third reschedule of this meeting, so we're, we're certainly conscious of that. We had to postpone a parent conferences for tonight at the Ryan, so there's all kinds of things like that we have to keep an eye on and keep, keep measurement at, but we will keep looking at any possibility that, and certainly, we will be enticed by anything that shows quality instruction to our students and, and keeps, maintains the standards at which we certainly want our students, expect of our students in front of our staff every day. But right now, we don't have any magic answers, but we're, we're always open to look, and we'll keep looking in that direction. A second element I would like to discuss a little bit is that around security. We had an event at the high school last week where there was a concern over a comment that a student made that resulted in a significant police response and, I think, many pieces of false information out on social media, but a huge thank you to the Tuxbury Police Department who assisted us in working through that, and also the NEMLEC team who came in and helped us. It was a great job by the high school staff. It was clear evidence that our ALICE training is showing benefits. Not that anything, not that everything went smoothly, we certainly have things we can learn from this and pieces we can train further on, and several elements we debriefed on quite a bit, but the high school was in a shelter-in-place for an extended amount of time on that day. We worked very closely with the police department, the police chief was here most of the day, and in those scenarios around those type things that involve a police investigation, we oftentimes have to take our marching orders from the police in that while we're trying to make sure our students are safe and that we're communicating out. It's a little bit frustrating because as a police investigation's going on, we don't have that information to message out. So, once we got to that point, NEMLEC responded. There was a decision made jointly by the police and the school department that there was a preference in making sure all students were safe and secure leaving the building, therefore metal detectors were brought in. It was made pretty clear during, by midday, by the detectives that there was actually no threat to the school or any issue of that nature. We decided to proceed on with the regular school day, use it as a training opportunity, worked closely with multiple agencies outside of Tuxbury during that event. There were many dismissals that day from the high school, which certainly was a, a stress on the high school staff. I went out many times and spoke to many parents in line, I can't tell you how cooperative and supportive the parents were who were here waiting in a long line to dismiss students, how cooperative the students were, particularly those who I had spoken to and met with at the end of the day after being in a shelter-in-place for an extended period of time, and our staff responded very well, and I think that goes along, a lot to the partnership we have with the Tuxbury Police Department Detective Gonzalez on our ALICE training. Certainly, when any of these events happen, it's certainly a time for us to relook at where we're at and, and look at what resources and assets we want to continue to focus on. Certainly, our training in ALICE is at the front end. I've met with Detective Gonzalez three times since the event, and we will continue to look at lessons learned from this event and other events and continue to train and drill with ALICE. We continue to work with the district security team and have debriefed with the high school team and the police in regards to this event, and will continue again to look at all aspects of that as, as a district. We certainly had several events planned as a district security team as far as extensive drills going on, but I'd also remind the committee that we, we've had two other real-world events. One was a power outage at the Heathbrook School, and the second was, most recently, about two and a half weeks ago, a water main break at the Ryan School. In both those instances, we moved hundreds of students during the school day without incident to an alternate location, assembled those students, fed them, and got them back for dismissal in time to be reunited with their families. That's not about power loss or water main break, that's about ALICE training, that's about putting in place systems and making sure we're working well with our town agencies to make sure those type things can happen. So those are all evidence that that type of work is happening regularly. Currently, we have several things we're looking at security-wise. We had allocated through our town meeting last year an upgrade in the exterior doors in both the Heathbrook and the Dewing School last year. That work has gone out to bid, and we hope to have that worked on this summer to include a new upgraded vestibule at the Heathbrook School. We've also received, to the great thanks of Representative Moselli, a $200,000 grant for emergency repairs at the North Street School, which we are hoping that we can apply to upgrade the front entrance to the Heath, to the North Street School and, and upgrade the security means by, with that as well. We've also partnered and just talked with the town manager within the past couple of weeks, that he is looking to allocate a sum of money that would allow us to have an extensive audit of our security front entrance system, specifically our vestibules, and to have a specific look at those as far as what we can do to harden those targets, what are we looking at access and control, how we can look at that long-term. That will be a significant investment by the school district and the town once we look at that, because many of these entrances are going to have to be highly upgraded. We had just recently looked at the high school and looked and brought in a vendor and have budgeted for upgrading the glass in the vestibule into the main office to a higher-grade glass to make that a more secure element. We've invested in the past year and a half significant monies into our surveillance camera system, adding cameras, adding access to cameras at the different schools. We will continue to do that. We've just signed on to do an audit of our camera, security camera systems to see where we can improve on that and how we can keep moving in that direction. We've also targeted one of our newest hires in the technology department to specifically look at that element of security cameras and have technology people available to assess that immediately. We, within the past five months, we had a audit of our technology securities to look at our internet security and look at all other elements connected with that, and we actually did very well in that. The town has also purchased just recently a product that will monitor social media and alert us if there are any threats via social media to the school or to our personnel. So the police will be monitoring that, that's something we will work with, so we're, again, another layer that we, we wanted to look at. I just talked to the police chief last week, he's looking into writing a new grant that would increase the number of SROs in the district. So that's, that, those are pieces we're also looking at. We had purchased as part of last year's budget to increase the number of Raptor identification systems that we currently have now at the high school, the middle school, and the Ryan, to expand those now to the K4, where visitors now show their license and that is scanned and that is assessed as far as those people's ability to enter, but it also prints out an ID immediately so that we can track visitors. One of the biggest elements we'll see, and, and I think over the, the next month or so, we'll see some significant change, we've looked at our security protocols, we've looked at our buildings and looked at times when our doors have had a history of being unlocked, arrival, dismissal time. We want to make sure if at arrival and dismissal time, there is a body there. We've looked at when our schools are rented out or when the community is using our schools. Those are not times where we should take a break on security. We're going to have to look at different protocols when we rent out our buildings and different protocols when town organizations utilize our buildings. These buildings need to be, remain locked and secured and not an open door. And we'll look at restructuring some of our personnel, particularly here at the high school, and looking at adding a level of human security after school hours that is here for the amount of events. This is a great facility, we want the community to use it. It's a great asset to the community, but we can't have people coming through open doors. We've got to have a checks and balances system. So those are all pieces that we're looking at right now. This work is never done, we have to keep this on our front burner at all times, but it is something that's certainly a high priority for the district right now, and we'll keep that work going. Just one other last note, again, within the student report, there was a mention of the National Arts Society Monday night. That was a great event, over 80 inductees, just a great, again, another example, and I know Mr. Cutlass talked about the student-driven part, that's, that's a student-driven ceremony that is very powerful, and it's, it's great to see our students achieve that type work.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Francis?
Mr. Malone, can you just talk to the community a little bit about that, the night we had about making good choices with the district attorney?
Thank you very much.
And police chief.
Another element within our, our, our security element was a required mandated meeting for all junior students who would be attending the junior prom, are required to attend a meeting here at night with their parents, with the keynote speakers being the chief of police and the district attorney. And specific, talked about social hosting law for parents to make sure they understand what the law is around if students or young people are drinking at, underage people are drinking at their house. Also, had good conversations about good choices, expectations for parents. It's a great way to bring students and parents together to hear a consistent message and for students and parents to know that it's not just school rules and school discipline, there's legal aspects to this, there's, there's key things in this, and we want our students making good choices, so they're not involved with the discipline process at the school, they're not involved with the court system, that they're making good choices and we're supporting them in that, and that was a And that was a great event to kind of tie those all together.
I think it was, I was present that night and I think it was very well attended and I think that the public and the students and the parents, especially because they're juniors, some of it was their first time, really learned a lot. It was a lot more than just about the prom, it was about the legality of things. I thought it was really well done by both individuals involved. Thank you.
And with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Regan.
Thank you. Well, you brought up the topic of grants. I'll have you know that we are currently in the process of being audited on particular criterion for our Title I and Title II A grant. The Department of Education audits our program through common student assessment, through coordinated program reviews, and also through the auditing of our grants. Particularly, they're looking at our monitoring and review of how we spend our II A money in the areas of our evaluation system, our student and staff feedback process, how teachers and administrators write their goal through those feedback tools, our induction and mentoring program for over two years, and our PD planning, goal setting, how we collect data through multiple sources to plan our PD. You've heard me talk about this before, the multiple ways we determine, and then of course, how are we spending our entitlement money. So our documents will be uploaded tomorrow on March 15th and we'll participate in an interview with the department on March 29th. I look forward to giving you more information after the audit is complete. Our kindergarten registration also fell victim to the rescheduling due to snow. March 5th on Monday, we successfully started our kindergarten registration process. On the 7th, we had a great day, and on the 8th and the 9th, we had two snow days. So both the Heath Brook and the Doing have rescheduled that kindergarten registration for the 12th, Monday, which successfully went off. They did have a day rescheduled for today. They additionally have Thursday, March 22nd, for the rescheduling of the nighttime event. Both of our principals, both of our Heath Brook and Doing schools will work with any families who cannot participate in the kindergarten rescheduling during those specific dates and need to contact the school for another time. And I'm excited to tell you that our integrated PK preschool program and our extended day preschool program are both. We're currently taking names for our waiting list, so that's wonderful news. They both filled up very fast and those programs continue to improve and it shows with the registration. I think that's my report.
I really don't have, a couple of things I was going to say, Mr. Malone already kind of touched base on, I was going to talk about the custodians and the maintenance staff. Custodians were also here. They came in their regular shifts yesterday and they all worked during the day-to-day to try to get the clouds out. We did have to bring in a couple of front loaders to move the snow, which we did do. The other thing that we talked about during the hearing is just to remind everyone, there is a finance committee meeting tonight at 8:00 at the Town Hall where we will be going over our budgets again and then public hearing again next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Okay, moving right along to our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to take anything off our consent agenda this evening or does anyone have any comments about anything within the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. Moving right along to committee reports. The elementary building, school committee is up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As this committee meetings and other meetings and other things, our elementary school building committee has seen the way of some snow also. So I'm just going to do a brief recap from the last time. The following is a brief update since our last presentation on January 24th. The building committee, the OPM and designer continue to meet on a regular basis, weather permitting, to review and discuss the Tuxbury Elementary School project and items establishing meeting project goals and objectives, perform educational visioning program meetings with the faculty and staff, review and evaluate existing conditions at the Trahan, review and evaluate other school town properties, potential site selections should a new building become the preferred solution, and create conceptual design layouts of potential school building footprints for a variety of enrollments that the MSBA has approved with the agreement we have. And those are a straight replacement of the Trahan for 265 students, a 550 student school, which would be three, four townwide, and a 790 student school, which would be two, three, four townwide. Those are what we have to give options to the MSBA as we move forward because those were the enrollments that they approved. The building committee has approved is now under contract with designer Flansburgh Architects of Boston. Now that the project team has been formed, a project kickoff meeting was held with the MSBA, the OPM, designer, and members of the build committee on February 28th at the Trahan School. It really went well. The MSBA came out and gave a lot of information to everybody that we wrote down and important dates. And really, the next really important date for the building committee is on July 13th, and I'll talk about that in a second. The primary purpose of the meeting was for the project team to review the project schedule, budget, roles, responsibilities, and expectations, along with reviewing the project deliverables and timelines. The look ahead project tasks over the next several weeks will include to present to the building committee the recent evaluation report of existing conditions at the Trahan and perform a cursory review of the three, other three elementary schools. Review the education program and generate an initial spaced summary on the district's education program. Prepare the PDP, which is the preliminary design program, which is submitted to the MSBA as a preliminary plan, reflecting the findings of the current condition and options for the look ahead solutions. After the PDP submissions, the project will move to the preferred schematic design known as the PSR. The PHRAE, which is shortlist options towards a preferred solution to resolve overcrowding, faculty infrastructure issues, and education needs, to name a few. So that's what we need to have by August 13th for their meeting, for their board meeting, is the preliminary design program. We're also reviewing and discussing the owner's project requirements for the purpose of generating a project mission statement, instituting an all encompassing project goal and expectation, and establishing the design parameters to develop and evaluate preliminary and final alternatives with a recommendation for the most cost-effective and education appropriate solution. After the feasibility study, the next phase will be the schematic design, which we will provide more details in the month ahead. Our next building meeting is scheduled for March 15th, tomorrow night, 6:00 PM at Town Hall. We're looking forward to provide monthly updates through the process. One of the things I would want to mention also is Mr. Malone mentioned, we talked a little bit about it with the MSBA. As we move forward with the project, security and safety in the new building is important. We talked about, we don't want to know what's best right now for security and safety, we want to know what's going to be best 10 years from now so we can move forward to have the safest building possible. We talked to the MSBA about if they have any programs that they would like us to pilot in terms of security, we'd be more than happy to do that with them. So we're looking forward to it. We're going to start our public meetings very shortly, I believe March 27th is our first meeting.
Correct.
And we will get, we will get that out to the community. And these are times that I've, many questions over the last three weeks have gotten from parents and residents talking about security, and these are what we're looking for, we're looking for input from the community with their concerns and what they'd like to see in this building. And it sounds like that we have a lot of time, but basically as we move this project forward, our goal is to get this to a town vote at the May 2019 town meeting and to get this project opened up in the new building for August of 2022. So I know it sounds like a long way away, but it really isn't, and we're moving right along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass, would you like to add anything?
No.
Partners together on the elementary school building. Okay, moving right over to Mrs. Bennett for the Tuxbury Education Foundation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The TEF is working with Ms. Matthews to secure the 21st century tool items that the principals had requested. Actually, the TEF will be attending next meeting at our school committee meeting to present a check to the schools. And also June 11th and 12th, there will be the annual spelling bee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. And then Mr. Sullivan, any update on the wellness committee?
Next meeting is Monday, the 19th, so I'll have an update next Wednesday for you.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving right along, over to you, Mrs. Bennett, for our policies this evening.
Okay, we have 25 policies within our packet. These policies are recommended for review and revised as a result of legal changes, changes in practice, and updating language to reflect modern needs. This is the second and final reading and will require a vote. The policies are GCBB, employment of principals, GCBC, professional staff supplementary pay plans, GCE, professional staff recruiting, GCF, professional staff hiring, G, sorry, CGJ, professional teaching status, GCQF, suspension and dismissal of professional staff, GDO, evaluation of support staff, GDQD, suspension and dismissal of support staff, HB, negotiation legal status, HF, school committee negotiation agents, IB, academic freedom, IC and ICA, school year and school calendar, ID, school day, IE, organization of instruction, IGB, support service programs, IGD, curriculum adoption, IHA, basic instructional program, IHAI, occupational education, IHAM, health education, IHAMA, preventive notification sex education, IHB, special instructional programs in education, IHBEA, English language learners, IHBH, alternative school programs, IJ, instructional material, IJOB, community resources. So I'll need a, I'll make a motion to accept these 25 policies as in our packet.
I'll make a motion to accept the 25 policies in our packet as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second on the floor tonight to approve the 25 policies presented in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Okay, moving right over to old business. We're going to start with the next generation's MCAS update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you'll see some correspondence and some updates, although they seem a little old now. The online practice tests are available for the new next generation MCAS test. They include the dynamic and interactive features students will use on the new test. Both teachers and parents have been given links to these sites and what I did was just really tried to draw your attention to some of those new features. Both or all of the tests now have a computer-based test and paper test for the new test, there's an answer key. So while we've been asked several times, are there more than one practice test? The goal of the practice test is to simulate what it feels like to sit at a computer with your practice paper and walk through taking a test online. So it isn't necessarily to do it once and know if you got the answers right or wrong, it's to work with those dynamic features of a new online test. So you'll see that I supplied you with the links for the English language arts, the math, and then the updates to science, technology, and engineering practice tests. You should also know that we are doing ongoing infrastructure trial testing at all of our schools who will participate in the next generation online test. And what does that mean? We test our technology infrastructure, we stress it, we put all students on their device at the same time, reaching out to our server, going online, and seeing if that's a smooth process. We always learn from doing that, and this year there'll be a higher frequency of students on devices at the same time. We've learned that we need some additional access points and we'll continue to stress our infrastructure so that we know that we're ready come day of testing. MCAS update also is that our high school 10th grade ELA legacy, the last time we take that legacy 10th grade ELA test is happening March, I believe it's the 27th and 28th, it's happening at the end of March. So as a reminder, our teachers are preparing for that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Regan. Moving right along to the calendar.
Okay, as requested, you had asked for an update to our chain of command along with our 2018-2019 calendar. All of our administrators have taken a look at it, we've updated it. You'll see that we've also, if you go to the back of the chain of communication, have just restructured, people felt a little confused in the order that telephone numbers were provided, so we started with K through 2 all the way down to, up to high school. So additionally put in some of our new directors and coordinators and assistant directors into the chain of communication. We feel that the 2018-2019 draft of the calendar and chain of communication is good to go pending negotiations from our collective bargaining units.
Does anyone have any questions or feedback? Okay, great.
I don't know if we took a vote on the chain of communication last time or the calendar in its totality, so I, does that need to be done tonight?
If you want, yeah.
I think we can.
Yeah, we might as well move forward, we could put it up on the website and obviously we can, I would just probably put a footnote pending any negotiations.
Right.
Especially when we're talking about, you know, we're currently in our three-year cycle of negotiations, like professional development days and things like that, that could change, so maybe we just put a footnote pending any changes to contract negotiations, there could be some slight changes. But would someone like to make a motion to approve the calendar this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's 2018-2019 school calendar and chain of communication.
A second?
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor tonight to approve the 2018-2019 school calendar and chain of communication. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, as far as the Ginsburg Award, again, it's a little bit of a victim of rescheduling due to the weather. The selection committee had to postpone a couple of times, we'll get another one on the book, but we have a lot of great nominees coming in, so it's going to be a difficult decision for the selection committee. But once again, thank you to the Ginsburg family for providing this opportunity. It's a great way for us as a school district to say thank you to community members and those who've really promoted the Tuxbury Public Schools.
Okay, great. So that's just a shout out to the community that we are still accepting nominations and you can find the nomination right online. The paperwork, if you have any questions, just certainly call the superintendent's office or any one of your school committee members. But again, we look to partner up and acknowledge anyone, and it says right in the criteria, seeking nominations, which was established in 2013 to recognize an individual, group, or a company or organization who has a significant impact on the Tuxbury Public Schools in the area of physical, monetary, or tangible contributions or volunteering to benefit the school or the district. So again, it's not too late, you have till the 23rd, so feel free to nominate more people because we do have a lot of wonderful partnerships here in Tuxbury. So thank you. All right, moving right on to new business. We've already taken some votes. I know the, number one, we're going to have a presentation and a vote at the next upcoming school committee meeting, so we're going to take that off the table. We've already done number two and three, so the next one up is the French textbooks recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is informational only, no vote is needed tonight. I am in full support of the recommendation of Principal Vogel for the textbook purchase of Docord by Vista Higher Learning. As you can see from the rubrics, two textbooks for the French program were piloted and the committee that, or the teachers that piloted are recommending Docord. What will happen now, I'd like to change the date on that memo to read that a recommendation to purchase and implement this textbook will be on the April 11th school committee meeting agenda because as I expressed earlier in the meeting, we would like a two-week minimum for anybody who'd like to review or look at those materials in the curriculum office to have a chance to do so.
Great.
Moving right along, again, on the ACE curriculum, this is informational only, no vote is needed tonight. As we expressed earlier from the community questions asked, that the special education assistant director and director will reschedule an opportunity for parents, especially those parents with students or children who are involved in the pilot, to come in and actually ask questions about the program. And then any students who are involved in our DLC program to come in view and look at the program. So likewise, I'd like to recommend that we make the recommendation to purchase and adopt the ACE program on the April 11th school committee meeting agenda in order to have plenty of time for parents to review those materials.
So can you just make sure that we get the, the school committee gets that date of when they're going to have that community presentation as well in case any of the members want to see that as well?
Sure. Sure.
And then I just want to stop before one moment, Mrs. Regan, I think Mrs. Bennett had a question for the French textbook, so I just want to send it over to Mrs. Bennett.
Sure.
Thank you. I also the pricing for the Vista, I didn't see the pricing on the other in our packet, if maybe for either the next school committee meeting or when you come back in April, if you could have both, that would be appreciated.
Okay, they only did the not to exceed, but not the actual cost proposal. Thank you, yes, still have that. We'll need the exact number.
It would be nice.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now to professional development?
Yep, and now also in informational only, no vote of the committee is required. March 6th marked our last full day, Professional Development Day in the district, and this day really was a wonderful, wonderful day. I don't, you probably can't tell from the title list, but the only training that was provided by a paid consultant was the High School West Ed Training, which was fantastic. What the training, really the goal is to help improve our lesson planning and to help our department heads and some of our content leaders facilitate data analysis and improve lesson planning with their full department. The rest of the PD throughout the district was really, hats off and really acknowledgement to our math coaching team and our special ed team, who really helped our K through 8 teachers, especially in the area of math, look at the math data they have at hand to produce better formative assessments to get that standards-based data and then what do you do with it? So it was really a dynamic day for those coaches providing that PD to teachers. And then our special ed department in total. You can see the many opportunities they provided to special ed teachers, as well as case managers and related service providers around compliance and around tier systems of interventions. And I think, you know, to see them providing that PD to our specialists, if you remember our art, music, health specialists have all students with them every day. And what they did was some real intensive training around specific disabilities and how to accommodate and modify for those students. So, you know, one of the requirements Desi has for our teachers is they all participate in 15 hours of special ed professional development over a five-year cycle. And this PD day really helped to give them quality PD in the area of special ed. So again, I want to just shout out, hats off to our math coaching team and our special ed team for the great day of PD they gave to many of our staff members.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. And then last up is the superintendent mid-year review. So in this district, we think it's really important that communication is a two-way and that the school committee is always communicating with the superintendent. Some districts only do the ELA review. We found here in Tucksbury that it's important that we have a mid-year benchmark so that we're both communicating with the superintendent. Although he communicates with us on a regular basis, I think all five of us could say that. And there's been feedback, good and bad, throughout the entire year. We do like to take the time to do a mid-year review and then we'll do the formal review that goes in his file, which we conducted later on in the year. So what we did is the five of us talked about where we thought we saw Mr. Malone and we wanted to give just the community a snapshot for the mid-year review for our superintendent. So the mid-year review of the superintendent gives the school committee the opportunity to reflect on Mr. Malone's goal setting for our students, staff, and school facilities. A formal evaluation of Mr. Malone encompassing the six areas of district standards will also be completed in June of 2018. Mr. Malone, in his second year as a superintendent of the Tucksbury Public Schools, in that capacity continues to exhibit strong leadership skills which positively impact our district. So we took some time to talk about some performance indicators. In this mid-year review, the following performance indicators include, Mr. Malone has created smaller district leadership teams to charter the course for the improvement of instruction for all students. He's continued mentoring all of our district administrators. He's developed a five, a district five-year plan. He continues to lead the elementary school building project. He has reorganized our technology department, which included his changes to operations and personnel. He's continued his professional development monthly through our new, through the new superintendent induction program. He's managed the day-to-day operations of our district, including emergencies and the day-to-day operations. He's also developed a long-range capital plan which addresses our infrastructure, school building, and staff needs. We could go on and on and list several things regarding what Mr. Malone, but we wanted to pick those key things to let the community know. We also wanted to pick some key things as we move forward as a district for areas of concentration for Mr. Malone. And the following are things as a school committee we wanted to include. Obviously, our top priority is always focusing on student achievement, the successful implementation of the elementary school building project, developing a fiscally sound budget that will address our district needs, negotiating contracts with seven bargaining units, evaluating our current community service department, monitor and assessing the new Tucksbury Public Schools website, and assessing the implementation of new security measures throughout our district. So again, we could go on and on. We just tried to pick key points of accomplishments and key points of focus areas. In Mr. Malone's second year as a superintendent of the Tucksbury Public Schools, we find that he has been both professional and consistent with his approach to the students, parents, staff, and community members. We recognize and appreciate his sincere commitment to our district. We look forward to working with Mr. Malone as we continue to move this district forward. So again, this is just a snapshot of his mid-year review. At this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues to see if anyone would like to add a few comments to Mr. Malone directly. But as a whole, we are extremely pleased with the direction this district has continued to move in and that really exemplifies your leadership, Mr. Malone. We're very impressed with not only your planning, your future planning, but your day-to-day operations, and we find you such a great fit here in Tucksbury. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any comments they'd like to say.
I think you did a good job.
Mrs. Bennett?
I think you did a great job summarizing it.
I agree with that as well.
I think, I think Madam Chair did a great job and I think that the, the stress of this winter in terms of, do we call school off? Do we do a delay? Do we do nothing? Do we understand? I think has been, I think you've handled that very well.
Keep up the good work.
So again, this is just a snapshot. We get in much more depth when we do the formal assessment that really is, you know, like all our teachers go through. Mr. Malone goes through a very close eyes around all. So Mrs. Johnson, I would just like to say, if you and I could get together in the next week or so, I'd like to send, set up, the next step is to set up a nice timeline for how we're gonna move forward in the coming months. We have different benchmarks for the superintendent's evaluation, so I can present that at the next school committee meeting for my colleagues so everyone knows our benchmarks as well because it is a very in-depth, where everyone will fill out an individual evaluation. Mr. Malone will also have an opportunity for individual school community members to meet with him about any questions or concerns, also to show evidence of the hard work that he continues to do. So it will be wonderful putting together that ELA evaluation because if this is any indication of where the ELA is going, I think it's gonna be a pretty good one. So thanks again for all your hard work, Mr. Malone. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to school community members for comments of interest, so we'll start with you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to wish Tucksbury Mathewan Girls Ice Hockey Team lots of luck on Sunday. They'll be playing, I believe, Woven down at the TD Bank Garden for the state championship title game. So good luck to our Red Rangers and I hope we have a new state championship flag we can put up in the gym next week. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I know it was mentioned tonight, the ceremony the other night for National Honor Society was amazing. I believe there were 85 new juniors inducted into the National Honor Society.